Our numbers continue to look good in the district. Again, it's one of those conversations where almost every other district in the mid valley, almost every other district in the state have lost kids due to COVID. Uh, and slowly come back, uh, we are growing. I think it's helpful to understand that we continuously have houses that are being built. Even moving in, uh, those kinds of things are numbers with three, four, two transfers we talked about over the last year have shrunk. Um, we still have them as we talked about in line path from where we were a few years ago down to where we will be a couple of years from now. Um, and as space runs shorter and shorter, our number of transfers gets smaller as well. Uh, we still have some intra district transfers, you know, as they're launching, it works in the transfer to Cloverdale, many of which transfer because they're working at Albany and it becomes easier way to pick up. Those kinds of things, so, um, it works out for the most part, uh, we're in a pretty good place at the moment. Um, as I said in my reports, um, at the moment, we have a number of kids, a number. And then we also have a number of kids who register, those numbers are not the same because by law kids have until, uh, next Monday, you know, ten days before we are required to drop and figure out where they're at. In the, in the meantime, about ninety-three, ninety-four percent of our total population is registered. Uh, so we're waiting on those other kids, so. When people say to me, why haven't they registered? The answer is, well, parents are working. Or maybe they just didn't want to, or whatever the case may be, there's a number of really good reasons why. Um, and there's some other reasons why they just didn't want to do it, so we'll work at that. All the secretaries spend time trying to make sure that the kids that we have are registered to us and make sure that they are the right places. Um, I checked today, uh, the fifty classrooms at elementary school, we have four that are over thirty. Only four out of the fifty, forty-nine, and nine classrooms, you have twenty-four classroom teachers at Onsville. From the seventeen classroom teachers at Turner. And you have eight classroom teachers at Cloverdale, that's up to the last year, Turner's also up as well. So I don't count special ed teachers or counselors or PB teachers or anybody else who's a teacher, we just count classroom teachers, that's how we do it. And at the moment, as of today, the average class size K five, well, some are bigger and some are smaller, at Onsville's twenty-five point one. Turner's twenty-four point four. And Cloverdale's twenty-three point seven. Sixth grade is a little higher because that's twenty-five point six, our incoming sixth grade. And our incoming ninth grade are two of our largest schools, our class sizes, so we monitor that period. So that has been really for the most part, um, our upcoming and tracking kind of thing, you track it every day. Um, the, the information happens in real time, if somebody drops, we know that immediately through the system. And, uh, you know, well, Martyr who's down the hallway from me does logistics for the district, Franklin. Um, he's the one that tracks that on daily basis, this is an update, I'll get an update daily through the month of September. The other thing we had, or the last course of the month was that, um, we had, uh, a visit, thank you, uh, Mr. Transar for visiting with parents. And I, uh, making sure we have the proper parent training, training for summer's, uh, programs. So our summer process at the pool, our summer process at, uh, at having kids work on, on site campus, we want to make sure that they are completely one hundred percent trained. We talked about how we could improve that process for next year. And we put that together for a March and April tickle in my file, make sure that that happens. So, uh, we are, we are working our way in that direction, so. And then the final thing I've got this evening, uh, for you is that, um, on the horizon here, there will be a, a request from I think legal counsel at W E S D about, uh, school districts joining. A nationwide lawsuit against Jibl, that's the bathing company. Uh, they have spent, uh, countless and many, many, uh, countless number of dollars, lots of additional funding. Um, making, uh, their product attractive to teenagers. And much like the process of the tobacco companies twenty years ago, there is a movement afoot to, uh, take them to court, class action lawsuits around that, members of school districts in Oregon uh, are joining and our legal counsel at W E S D is recommending that we do that. We'll get more information, give that to you, uh, before we make that decision. I don't think a lot of money is going to come our way. But I think it also says a statement about, I mean, why that's not something our students should be doing, so we work on. Questions on that big long report?
I do have a question.
Yeah.
Kids that, instead of they having the right to drop. Do we personally contact, try to contact each of those kids?
Those people in the audience, they're contacting families, uh, every minute of every day, and they're all nodding their head yes, because I know that they would do it. Uh, in every level, so we try to track down as many kids as we can. Um, some will say yes, some they can't get a hold of. Um, some have reasons, some haven't made it back from vacation yet.
What happened is they don't enroll, or they don't register, pardon?
If we know that they're here, we will work, work with them to get themselves, get them registered, it does take a little bit of time, we've had some students have registered already in December. Okay, so they're in our classrooms, or there are some laws around the idea that if they're here, we make sure we sue them. Uh, however, if they're not, and we don't see them, then it was our job to trigger where they are going. Because in the state of Oregon, with regard to the dropout rate, right? If they've been here for any period of time, any period of time. Right, they will be counted as a dropout, four years later, if you're a freshman or sophomore and you're senior, that we count as dropout. Other states counted differently, so when a student shows up for one or two days in Oregon and then disappears, that counts against us as dropout, in the state of Texas, they have to be there six months before they encounter this dropout. People wonder why the state of Oregon's dropout rates or graduation rates look different. Whereas we really truly play by, uh, we, 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 so we're tracking this easily.
So on this headcount, are we, is this all reimbursed for enrolled number or the registered number?
Well, that's funny that you should ask, um, there's a little bit of both played in there, obviously the state of Oregon would like to, to completely enroll, however, if we can count that they're there, I go to Scott, Scott, make sure that Carol does it, and we, and we have butts in seats, which is the phrase that we use.
Alright.
Uh, that, that's how we track it down, we would certainly like to enroll because they're enrolled, that we, that means that we have their information.
Okay.
Other questions? Okay, final thing I'd like to do, you have two new administrators in the crowds, and I, so I'd like to hear you say to you. Uh, at Onsville, uh, we have, Jody, would you like to send that, I'll, I'll let you do it, I'll let you do it, please, okay?
Introduce myself?
Yes, please.
I'm Jody Mitchell, I'm the Assistant Community Assistant Principal at Onsville Elementary, and I come from Silver Falls.
Thank you very much, and we have our Director of Communications.
I'm Greg Castella, really happy to be here. All four, four days on the job, so, yes.
And welcome, he was the one that got the thing out with regards to fire danger last Friday, I saw it, so first, first or second day on the job, we already had. Nice, Jess. Thank you guys, precious.
Thank you all for being here.
Hey, number of questions, finance, financial reports?
Finance report, in front of you, on the, on the numbers portion of that. The highlight is strong beginning, but balanced, so, one. And as you heard, our, our moment, uh, picture with early, all the numbers are looking good, so I think that that growth for the state school budget hold pretty close to that number, that's when all it kind of a little bit above budget, did those numbers hold? Like, uh, like in previous years, we, we wait until, almost about late October, November, then we set a report of the state after all's fallout, that may be just around the winter time, so. So last four, five, since it's positive, and so we hope that trend continues. Our expenses are particularly early, uh, we really don't know what our expense pictures are going to look like until, uh, send the first payment. Uh, we, we have a budgeting process, it's called position based budgeting, that really assesses how how much we're going to spend in salaries and benefits. Uh, and we're pretty conservative in that area, so we budget a little bit higher, they just pretty least. And so we would expect to see that to come in as, or close, a little bit under expectations. But we're never quite sure, that's the, they, they've established the packages, that kind of stuff. My team is working really hard, in fact, they're, and they're working tonight, uh, getting all the, uh, benefit selections attached to each of records, to everything. We'll have that ready for you. As Mr. Gomention, the seismic project was a success, we are doing some small things, um, also Mr. Gill, Tom that I met this morning, and we are already looking toward the next seismic project, and we've decided that we're going to apply for, uh, a seismic grants to repair the old gym here at the high school, it's a concrete wall structure. Uh, roof is kind of stacked on top, there isn't much of a tie to the whole thing, regardless, we, we're going seismic grants, it's really wrapping these, so buildings together to make sure that they all hold tight. So, uh, we've done, uh, an application for, for that particular building, it didn't get funded, but it was our second priority, so we're going to re, rehash the numbers, we, we expect that to be about two, um, two to two point five thirty dollars, if we're gonna, we'll find out. That's for the whole, I said. That is a little bit like then, it does.
And what was sent back to you?
About the same two point four.
That was?
Yeah, that was for a bigger, a bigger area, but it also had, uh, you know, it also included the roots, which was a big part of, the gym would also include the root. Uh, especially.
Okay. Okay, well, that's good, I mean, we need to keep kids safe, that's.
Yeah, absolutely, that's the most, uh, that's the most important thing, and we're also, we're also saying, doing it not just for life's sake, the first few seismic projects, it was just to keep the building standing enough for everybody to get out. And now we're, we're working to keep the building standing, uh, so that's, that's it's a different standard, it's such a more, so.
Okay.
Uh, that's a good success with this program, the slowest, on time and under budgeting, so we're happy with the outcome.
That's true, yeah, very good, okay.
Anybody have questions for me?
I do have a comment.
Yes.
I commend you for your courage, sitting in front of her. Well, thank you very much. And, uh, please. Thank you. Good evening, you guys, thanks for having me, um, you have my report, Ryan, I'd like to highlight two things tonight, one is about our, uh, labor, as you know, across the country, the labor market's super tight. And, uh, when we have openings, it's super difficult, obviously, you talk to Jennifer and Lisa about some applicants and it's just difficult, we're making all kinds of combinations. At the high school, we feel super fortunate to have gotten, you know, um, things fall online, and I couldn't be more pleased with the quality candidates in the midst of very few candidates being out there. Um, and I want to highlight, uh, one of our administrators is not here, uh, James Rise, uh, new athletic director, uh, we've thrown him into the fire. Uh, got him working with Tony and Tyler, who are amazing and getting stuff done. Uh, we've broken him in and he's, he's getting amazing things done, so you'll get a chance to meet him in another couple of months or see him around some events, so he's already doing a great job, along with other hires as well. The other thing I want to highlight this year is, uh, this, this meeting is that it's been a nice transition back from all the accommodations we made at COVID to talking about education again, and last spring, we really started that transition, getting into, um, how can we make our instruction better, how can we help kids learn more? We already know Cascade does a great job with graduation rate, um, our, our upcoming freshman on track rate is going to be good again, um, I'll announce that when the, when the, we're allowed to, um, the state's going to release that here next month, so, uh, it's going to be excellent again. But, um, we really get a chance to kind of dig back into making sure that we're having kids come out of Cascade High School with a diploma that makes them college and career ready. And, um, we just feel like that we're, we're working hard at that, we want to make sure that every opportunity is used. Um, and so one of the things we've been focusing on is trying to find more ways for kids to earn college credit in Cascade. Right now, they can earn college credit in three ways, one, they can take an AP class, um, um, which they take a course that's certified through AP's College Board, our teachers have to certify and send them a syllabi. Our kids go through the course, and in May, they take an, an exam, they score a three, four, or five. Most colleges in the United States will give them college credit for that. Um, and this year, we've added three more courses to our AP catalog, um, Deb Bellmore is teaching AP World History. And then Mr. Whipple is teaching AP Physics and AP Chemistry. So we continue to add, uh, AP classes. So that's one way kids can earn college credit, the other way is they can take a class that is approved by Shremekah as a college credit now class. And the college credit now, um, they have to go through a rigorous background as far as, uh, how they do they have the right coursework in their academic history. Uh, once they do, they turn a syllabi, making sure that it aligns with Shremekah's syllabi and the same course. And kids will sign up, they pay twenty-five dollars, um, and they can get up to three or even six college credits. Um, we can do that in, uh, English, um, our senior English teacher is certified, uh, Charlie cleaner, um, and we can do that in health, um, Mrs. Cox is certified, and we can do that in Spanish grades, for Bonn Bachman. So we'd like to expand that, but Shremekah is super tight, we're in negotiations and talks with them about how can we get more teachers certified to do that? Um, because we believe if kids leave here with a quality education and college credits in their back pocket, it just helps them so many ways in getting, in getting jobs, uh, with a long resume, you're getting into colleges or tech schools. Look, I can, I can write well. And, you know, speaking from experience, my son is a freshman at, at the college this year, he doesn't have to take freshman English, which is fantastic. He doesn't have to take US history, because he passed US history test, so, um, it's just, it's, it's a monetary savings, and it also just proves to the world that our kids are coming out college and career ready. And then a third way, um, is, uh, through our W O C A, with the Lemon Career Academy. We have almost thirty, I think we have twenty-seven or twenty-eight kids going to the Lemon Career Academy this year. And that is on Lancaster at the old Toys R Us, they've completely revamped that building. And, um, students take courses there, um, they're a little half day there and half a day here. And, uh, they are, Shremekah is, uh, giving them college credits there, so kids are coming out with credits, we always want to find more ways. Um, Tony and Lisa is our C T E Administrator, she's doing a great job of looking at different ways that kids can earn credits, um, adding programs, making sure that we're not pillaging others at the same time. Really close to the, to the breaking point of having just enough for a school our size. Because if you have too many, you start pulling kids away from different programs, we don't want that, we don't want competition between those programs, but we're excited about the opportunities, we're excited about getting back to education this year, and really talking about how do all teachers do even better at their job, and the staff at the high school is fantastic, just like the one at the junior high, they were amazing too. But I've been impressed, nothing but impressed with the teachers and staff at the high school. Any questions?
So I'll ask a question, so you said you're negotiating with Shremekah to get more college credits?
Yeah.
Are there other schools, like, like that, who would, would work with us?
We're, we're going to look at that, because Shremekah, um, is going through, they're actually in contract negotiations with their teachers, I don't know what union that is, but there's some angst, because of course they want seats in their chairs as well, they don't want kids necessarily earning credits in their high school, right? Um, and so there's some discussion about that, but, um, we're on hold, because we've asked for, what are your new departments, can we find ways to get more teachers qualified? Um, we reached out to them, Ben, and they said, well, try Shremekah first. And so if, if it doesn't go well with Shremekah and negotiations, we might go to them back, right, or is there other schools online that we've talked about? That's a good question, I don't know that, yeah, right, that's a, that's a great way to explore, for sure. But I can't say that, that conversation has been going on at this superintendent E S D level for the last four or five years. Uh, it used to be a long time ago, when it's each job, that new, that new, uh, uh, community college will let your kid come there, and now that it's kind of reversed, they've been very standoffish. Um, the Department of Ed and Higher Ed Coordinating Commission, which governs, um, public entities at, at the higher ed level, um, have kind of tried to put the brakes on, we uh, Education K H Law tried to step up and say, wait a minute. Right, if your goal is college and career ready people, right, for your state, why wouldn't you make this easier? The pit, peed, nail on the head, their, their associations, their unions are trying to slow that up a little bit, and they want to ask questions. For example, they will say something like, well, your teacher doesn't have a master's degree in math, their degrees in education, their master's degree in education, so that's work. But our response is, well, that's interesting, our math teacher's done it for twenty-five years, uh, why don't you go grab one and see which one does better? For fairly certain, ours doesn't that. Uh, but they, you know, well, you know, they'll have the right credentials, and we end up having these conversations. So it's unfortunate, but we'll look at it. But, there's. Thanks.
I noticed the math, new math education program. Uh, class.
Yes, yes, yes. Uh, the front, the, the math teachers got together earlier last year, and they started talking about, they want to have there's always an angst about math, it seems like a large percentage of populations, I can't do math, and I've talked to the council parents, my kid's bad at math because I'm bad at math, you know, and I didn't do very good in school, so there's this idea of, we've got to get kids to feel more positive about, because they're intelligent kids, they can do it, but a lot of times it's mindset, so the teacher came up with this, and they saw it somewhere else as well, at a conference they went to, but they came up with this discovery math concept. It's an elected class, um, we are taking one of their electors away, but as a freshman, they had five, so we figured, we're, we're not taking too much from them. Um, so we're asking them to take this elected class, um, and it's basically a participation class, it's helping them with number sense, helping them with problem solving, helping them think around problems, reviewing some basic math, getting them ready to jump into algebra the next term. Okay, and the idea is that, well, getting them to feel better about math, so they can just jump off and go. Um, and what we're going to see, it's a pilot, um, and, uh, the teacher said, we're not married to this, but we've really seen some evidence of some districts, different districts that it works, and so we'd like to try it, and I said, go for it. Anytime teachers want to try to make something better.
Absolutely, and that's always been, I mean, that's like the focus that we had last year, the year before, was did reading, and now we're doing math, so this kind of fits right into it, since you had some issues with school one.
Definitely.
Okay, perfect. Any other questions? Thank you very much. Your high principal's report.
Beauty and A. Um, number one, I'd like to, um, reiterate the amazingness of our seismic grant that was done in our building, and it was down to the wire, let me tell you, I had some stressed out staff members. My bulletin board's not up, things aren't ready, but the maintenance crew came in and, you know, they were putting up things left and right, and if you haven't been in and seen the home mat room, it is truly phenomenal. Um, Kelly Cobrely, who was a student here, said, I'm pretty sure the cabinets and stuff that were in there were there when I went to school, so, um, long past overdue, being upgraded, Donna Ray is, um, thrilled and loves to show off her beautiful space, so please wait on by, the front entryway is bright and open, so, um, the seismic upgrade, while it was needed, provided also some amazingness that, um, brightened up our building in some areas that definitely could use that. And then you were just hitting on math, um, I've looked at our state test scores and language arts, which we've seen, um, I've been in the district for a long time, and when RTI came after four or five years, we started to definitely see an impact in sixth grade. Kids came in knowing how to read, and then we were able to just jump forward and, you know, use that information so much better, instead of working on trying to get them to read, now applying their knowledge, well, math was, um, a little rough this year, and I can't imagine two years of doing, um, math online via COVID helped us at all. And then I realized that six out of my twelve teachers have never given a state test before, and they probably, the last time they did it was when they themselves took it back in high school. So it was rough, but, um, the group is fired up and they want to do better, we have iReady coming at us, um, my sixth grade staff last year's piloted it right after outdoor school, and they started seeing gains within six to eight weeks, so that was exciting. We have, um, the upcoming, now, current sixth graders who use iReady, and so my sixth grade staff has been chomping at the bit, when can I get this going? So that was positive, um, seventh and eighth grade will now pick up iReady as well, and, um, one of the areas that we were weak in was applied concepts to daily living, you know, using problem solving with um, current events in life, so two of my teachers went to a class and they are now pulling in the game of life, so kids are going to have different careers, and they're going to make money and lose money and get a speeding ticket or whatever along the way. So they're really excited about what can we do to make life, um, math real to their real existence, you know, and they're going to run checkbooks and, you know, are, do they have enough money to pay rent and their cell phone bill or not? And now what do we do if we don't have enough money, so my staff is on board for, you know, how do we bring our math scores up, they weren't very good, but, um, we're not that much below state average, but they're ready to be above them, you know, go for it, so I'm excited to see where, uh, we go with this information. I got new powered up staff and they're pretty competitive, so, um, I know they're going to look at the current, that's, you know, oh, that's not very good. We got to do better, I see some competition in your future, yeah, a little bit, which is good, that's what they need, yeah, all of them, so, yeah. Any other questions?
So I want to ask you, you said that your, your kids are learning about budgets and, and paying rent and whatnot, much time and effort do we put in as a district, maybe I shouldn't, I should ask everybody, but as, to educate these kids, or to get them to make them understand what it means to be on their own?
Um, I know through high school, my own two, my own three kids have taken a personal finance class, and they fill out W twos and W fours and have checking balances and everything. Um, whether they realize what it truly means until they get out in the real world, because it doesn't, firstly, it probably doesn't mean as much, because this is fake, and, you know, when I get out there. Yes, definitely, but when they first see that first credit card bill, and what does that truly mean to them, you know, do I even apply for a credit card, you know, and all that? Um, I think the farther they go, but I like this taste of it in junior high, and it's more of a fun atmosphere, I think they're even having rolling roulette to, you know, build to, you know.
Comes in next, or what?
Exactly, oh, bummer, you got pulled up from your grade of school, you know.
Actually, that's, that's a good, that's a good thing, to give them real world time.
Right. Yeah, they're super excited, and, oh, you got a flat tire, you got a tail, you know, a nail in your tire, so, you know, how much less traffic in the chores here to fix that summer, so, you know, and so, and all that, so.
Cool.
It's exciting, it's gonna be some good stuff, and they're pretty, they came in pretty fired up, which is what I wanted, mind map people to, you know, now that.
Right, right, I like that, thank you.
Outdoor school, I'm sorry, I just, yeah, is it in, no, it's in the spring, um, our director is due any day or any week, so we're going in the spring when the baby will be here, and we don't have to worry about rushing her to the ER while she's up there.
Good, yeah, okay, so, yes, it will hope for no snow this round.
Well, yeah, you know, we had, I think, three or four days of it, yeah, yeah, but it builds character. It did, and they loved it, they did, they love when the snow is great. It is, I understand that, venture does that, thank you very much.
Um, elementary principal reports, Onsville. Mr. Ritzer.
Good evening, uh, I've got my report in front of you, I'm just going to do a few highlights to that. First, we talked about summer programs, we had a great experience in August. One of the things I wanted to highlight was Ms. Rosio Diaz, they change, she does a phenomenal job connecting with our migrant families within our district. So much so that the W E S D views her program, the program she's built in our school, as one of the models for the entire area, so one day during, uh, summer programs, we had a deputy superintendent, two board members, and the coordinator for migrant ed of all W E S D come and walk through our school. And they were just very impressed, very happy about how integrated everything looked, the relationships that she had been building with families. It was like the aligning of stars, because while she was, while they were walking around, she had three moms in her room, they were learning how to make healthy breakfast, like, really just hitting all sorts of different areas, um, so just wanted to commend her, she does an amazing job. And it also provides a lot of translation for our district as well, so such an amazing person to have at our school. I also list our three main priorities for this school year, the first one is P B I S and ruler. We've already rolled out our new P B I S, um, initiatives, we've kind of reset what some of our thoughts and, um, COVID kind of just made everything a little swishy, so we're firming that up. Um, the second thing is ruler. On Wednesday, this week, our first late start, we have W E S D coming in to do a ruler one-on-one with our staff, some of our staff have been a part of it, some of them have not, so this is a great opportunity for us to kind of just refresh what ruler looks like, how can we implement that to our classrooms. Avid is another part, we're going to institute some avid PD for our staff members, and then uh, we P L C around math, we've done that the last three years, and we will continue to do that. The last thing I mentioned is safety, uh, we've got our buzzer system in, in both buildings, it's working pretty well for right now. Uh, there were a few kinks, but so far, so good, secretaries are feeling good about it, um, it makes us feel super safe. It's, it's a great thing, we, we've already walked through with Brian Dyer to come up with kind of what our next steps are. So that's kind of been a nutshell of what's been going on, any questions?
So I want to come down to school. Which I will. What do I do then?
You, which building?
Um, let's see, I'll go to New York.
Okay, so you'll walk up to the door, there's a doorbell, like, it looks like a ring doorbell.
Okay.
You'll hit a button. Our wonderful administrative assistant Jill will say, hi, who are you, how can I help you? Uh, you know, basically, what, what are you here for, essentially, in a nice, friendly sort of way? And then you'll state your business, she'll open the door for you, it unlocks, you know, walk into the office.
Okay, perfect, and that's been installed in all of our schools?
All of the elementarys and young.
Perfect, okay, that's because I Perfect, okay, that's cause I want. Any other questions?
What is ruler?
Ruler is our social emotional learning. You're the teacher. Thanks to Kelly.
I printed it.
Disregard my question, okay? Very good.
Go ahead.
Yeah, it's just a, it's it's our, basically our curriculum to teach those social emotions. Um, COVID really made a dent in that, so we're just kind of resetting ourselves, reaffirming ourselves that is a priority.
So I guess let me stand on that, what are you seeing different now than you saw three years ago in these cities of today? Give me some. Keep different everybody.
But really, really self-management skills is a big one that we've since. This ability to work independent. Ability to focus, or I have a problem, someone, you know, spilled my milk carton at lunch and I just. A lot of just little things, we we talk a lot about size of problem, size of reaction. What's your size of the problem? Did your reaction match it? Um talking through what that looks like and then getting skills, you know, do you need to take a break? Do you need to take a few breaths, like what do we need to do, what's that system look like? Also naming how we're feeling, you know, it's more than just a good, bad, sad math. Um it's naming those emotions, what am I feeling, how do I make sure? I can name that, if it's something more serious, how do I make sure I can get the supports ahead?
And you see, this is a bigger issue than it was three years ago?
Um, I, not necessarily, um I feel like we as a district before COVID. Acknowledge that this was something we wanted to institute, and in fact, I I think Matt did not even brought it to the, to you guys before being on the kid. And it was just something that really never got off the ground. Okay. Other questions?
So to to go on to that, uh is it more. Situational reactionary, or is there preventative stuff you do before stuff happens? Does that make sense? Okay, move with that, yes. Hundred percent. Yeah.
Thanks, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Christian Communication, listen. Bit quite a few um new hires on your list. Um that also means that we have fewer openings on our job board. Um we're down to one um classroom teacher, we're looking for over down front. All of the teaching positions have been built, we do have some instructional positions that um still needs to be built, but.
And would you say that's in comparison to other districts we have built?
Um, we are really have. There are a lot of districts out there that still don't have enough staff to teach. Um, and, yeah, there's huge educator shortage. So to find the people that we have valued, um and there's good quality people. Um, was huge, and I think, well, I know it's because of. You know, people talk about how good the district cascade is. Um and just like every time that we've interviewed somebody, one of the questions that we ask is, why do you wanna come to Cascade? And their response is, because I've only heard good things about it, and it seems like a great school district, somewhere where I would wanna be. And teaching, so. Um, we do have a couple of certified staff numbers who retired um at the end of the school year. And they are coming back um as a probationary one teacher, and that's Kelly Cobrely and Carol Flander. And then our new hires, um we have Emily Collins at Turner, Brittany Griffith as a spent behavior teacher at Onstel. Bruce Tennessee as our uh construction units teacher at the high school engineer high. David Shuey, um they spent resource teacher at the junior high and Sidney Sees were on elementary at Onstel. He, he was an instructionalist, actually a skills trainer. Skills trainer.
Yes, and he never left.
He never left. He never left, okay. Had his teaching degree.
Yes.
And we're able to get him a license so that we can work to get this section of course.
Okay, alright, so some shoes.
Awesome, any questions?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Six point O. And you have that report in front of you, and I'm gonna kind of take off and watch that, talk about ruler. Um, we had after COVID. A definite increase in restraint in the children, it's mostly restraints, it's not getting exclusion. And this is due because we have a a high number of our kids coming into the elementary. Eight through five that do not have any regulation skills after COVID. We, these kiddos struggled prior to COVID, don't get me wrong, they were still had a behavior room. But when they came into us this last school year after being out of school or had a preschool only in their homes. They had no coping skills, they were struggling with being around other students, their self-regulation was at its all time. Whoa, they weren't able to regulate themselves. We saw an increased number of restraints, however, around March. Those behaviors started to regulate back down. Beginning this school year, um I sent about ten individuals and two of the administrators to collaborate at problem solving. I hired some pretty great staff members who you've heard of, Griffin. I've now taken away three behavior classroom teachers from Dylan Kaiser. Um, you know, don't call anybody. Uh and they're coming to us, um and what are the time? And um the individual that I hired for the elementary uh behavior classroom, she can't start until October, she's being on the first six days. Um but she is going to be phenomenal, and currently I have Mr. Shuey in there studying for her. While we, while we do this little puzzle transition. But the collective problem solving and ruler, and the supports that we've put into this classroom. Um, we're seeing great things, we're already seeing a difference in the classroom, we're already starting to see these kids make improvement. A lot of the kiddos from last year are almost coming to us as different kids because they had some time to learn some skills. And things like clutch problem solving and ruler are exactly the foundation that kids need. If we don't focus on their behaviors, they are not going to get the academics later down the road either. So that's our goal. How many kids are in that? In that program, I have, in the elementary program, I have currently twelve. Um, next week it might be fourteen.
Okay.
Um across the district, our special education classroom, our specialized programs are not capacity. There is no more. Um you had an ex- exponential amount of movement, so families who've moved into the district. I actually asked a family not too long ago. What brought you to Cascade, and they said, because of your special education programs. They're seeking out, um we're one of very few districts that actually have specialized programs in the area. A lot of the districts, surrounding districts have started to dismantle their special program. And instead they're doing a full inclusion model, so regardless of the need, regardless of um. The capability, they, et cetera, they're pushing kids fully into general education classroom. And that's why I'm starting to see classrooms more in crisis than ever before across the state. Work, questions?
Couple a lot of first, I got one question, I just don't have to put them all in the words, I don't know.
Okay.
I don't know.
About it, no.
So on your report, you said, um there's a note, it says, one student was not eligible for special education. Uh the first time he was trained, but was eligible the second time, what's that mean?
That means that he probably was ineligible in the process. So in the very beginning of the year, the student was, wrecked my brain, I don't exactly what it is. And was ineligible, didn't have a special education diagnosis because he was new to our district.
So that means he was in the.
He was probably, well, he probably came into us general education for eight years, we probably had a restraining. Then we put in some extra supports, he was found eligible later down the road because we did a special education evaluation, the second time he was restrained. He had already been found eligible.
Okay.
Yeah.
How, how many years has this program been in place?
So when I was hired back in two thousand and thirteen as a consultant. This program was just started, that they had actually taken an autism room and a behavior room and they combined them. And the reason I was brought in is because Onstel's classrooms were in chaos. Students were literally, and I'm not, not exaggerating, swinging from the lights and climbing uh furniture. I came in, um and my first recommendation was you've gotta separate the programs. You need an autism program for students with autism because of the very different needs, and you need a program for just behaviors. That's the first thing we did. So that was two thousand and thirteen. And since then, this program, we've seen a huge increase and just kids making progress. Kiddos that started in the program fully self-contained, meaning they are not able to go out into general education due to safety and extreme behaviors. To only needing to be in the classroom for partial day. And accessing mostly general education, when they get up to the high school. And these kiddos are taking high school general education classes as well.
Yeah, that that was one of the questions I was gonna have is, is there an age discrepancy for this class, or is it from K to twelve? And then you just tailor it to the kid versus the program is what it is.
So at the elementary, we have K five, and it's only, the the self-contained program is only in Onstel. In one classroom, we have, we actually have the classrooms set right, side by side, we have K two and three five. I try to separate the bigs and the littles because the bigs usually have a worse mouth than the little ones. Right, so we wanna teach them, we wanna try to keep it separated as much as possible. Then you go to the junior high, and I have a junior high and high school program, which is six through twelve. And all of my programs, which really, I really try to, I don't like to cookie cover kids with a program, I wanna make programs for kids. And so each kid has a very individualized IDP, and so what their day looks like may be completely different than the kid that's sitting next to them.
Good. Thank you.
Any other question? Okay.
So in your reports, right, or in your, in your stuff there, there's, excuse me, information about the OSBA state convention. For school board members, um that that is coming up, I'll be contacting you, see if you guys wanna go. Uh I believe that twenty, somewhere late last week in September, Jennifer, Jennifer and Lisa will need to uh. Go through the process of booking room, that kind of thing, so. Uh let us know if you can make it, those days work and fit, you talked about that with regards to making sure it's come. Or some of it, all of it, whatever we can, that would be important for us as we continue to work on our goals. And send that for uh student issues, questions?
Okay, coach advisor list.
Coach advisor list, every year we give you the coach and advisor list for the various activities and stipends that we put out for those. Um that's the beginning list for the fall, gives you an idea of where we get started. Um, as as Scott said earlier, it's been unique, as normal, we do this many just for the fall. Please don't forget, we did about that many just for the summer programs that just finished a couple of weeks ago. And then the fall, and then in September, because we already have a contract, right, that the amounts of money the people make. For our classified and certified change September one. So all of the changes happen, and by the way, all the insurance is free ups, so if they wanna change their insurance, so September payroll is a little busy. So they're working on that, and uh and to add even more, on Scott's plate. You know, we pay on the twenty fifth, but if that's a weekend, we pay the day before, so the twenty fifth is Sunday, so it's probably on the twenty third. So that makes them uh very good, very busy, so they're working on that, but that is your coach advisory list.
Okay. Perfect. Any questions?
Okay, so last month, you asked the question about meal price alternatives. In this information, uh Mister Fasha, our our food service director, provided for us some information, so. As we talked about before, right, the federal government slipped away from free meals for everybody, that's what they did for COVID. Uh and then they went back to the more traditional way to do it, which is if people fill out a free and reduced form. And you get enough people to fill, they'll fill that out, your building can become eligible for free meals. Um Mister Fasha, having spent time at ODE, understands the rules and knows how to play the game. So he uh knew that our lowest socioeconomic status school is Onstel, he knew that they would be eligible. And they were, so that worked, and then what he could do is try to tie schools together. So for example, we had some people say, well, Taylor Kaiser is gonna cover all their kids. Exactly, but they are low enough socially economically, they changed some of those standards. So that all of their schools made an unreasonable threshold. So Chris went out and he said, okay, I'm gonna tie Turner and Onstel together, the next lowest socioeconomic school is Turner. But because Turner has grown, right, when you took the four hundred and some odd kids there and there's almost six hundred kids at at Onstel, put it together. The line where you can say it's free and reduced, we popped just above it. So we took Turner out of the mix and said, can we add Cloverdale, which is the highest of our socioeconomic. But because they only have a hundred and eighty-eight kids and they put it together with six hundred kids and they figured out what the line is, that became just below it. So Onstel becomes free, Cloverdale is free and our opportunity center is free for meals. Which meant that Turner, the junior high and the high school, would have to start paying again. One way to get around that is to make sure that our families fill out the free reduced form, if we can get enough of them to fill it up and there is a high enough mark. We can go back to free reduced. What you guys asked me last month was, well, we don't like the fact that some schools are free and others aren't free. This sheet of paper in here shows you what it would cost. If you were to, they took April of twenty nineteen, which was uh before COVID. And they took an average and that's a good month to look at, it's a healthy month, because it's got a lot of days. And said, this is about how much it would cost you for the Cascade Junior High, High School and Turner. With regard to uh the amounts for breakfast or the amounts for lunch. And if you added it all up and covered it all, it would cost about three hundred and, what's it say, three hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars. Out of the general fund to cover that for one year. So. Those, that's the information, I don't know if there's something you wanna do with that, I would say to you that considering. Uh we haven't seen all the finances come in yet, I wonder if I would recommend that. If you wanted to take a look at doing something a little bit different, charging X number of dollars per person. Or waiting to see if we can get more of those forms in for next year, and leaving it, please remember that twenty nineteen and all the years before. Right, we paid for free, people paid for their free reduced amounts. In the state of Oregon, they also use for the SIA fund, that they don't give schools. They double the amount that if you're on free and reduced rate, there's so much you make per household, they doubled that amount, so more kids are actually eligible. They just gotta make sure they fill up. We have kids that fill up, or we see all the families do so. Questions?
Yes, so if we can get all of these forms filled in this year, wouldn't it affect you about next year?
I believe that's the case. Chris is not here to answer that, it's one of those technical things, right, the five books, free reduced lunches are.
So.
Ask me on that, the warrant and keys, I know, we can ask him that for sure.
My friend, my impression there is that you pass immediately.
Does it? That would be a good zone.
So.
That's my recollection.
Okay.
In nineteen. Everybody, they paid for their meals.
Some did, some schools didn't.
But in nineteen, so still some schools did.
Correct.
Okay.
Some schools got, if you remember, right, we had some schools that were getting free breakfast. Right, they were actually able to get free breakfast to save a program.
Right.
We're able to say, call breakfast in the classroom.
Right.
We had some people that were a little frustrated because everybody wandered down, sit themselves in the chair, that's up their desk. Like watching a number of kindergartners eating at their desk, they're all smiling at that, just saying that. So it's time to clean it up.
So we had people that paid for their struggles, then in twenty, with COVID, all meals actually.
The federal government covered all costs.
And, and twenty one?
At twenty one.
So.
Twenty one, twenty two.
Twenty one, twenty two school years, so nineteen, twenty, twenty, twenty one. And now we're in twenty.
Twenty twenty one. Twenty one, twenty two.
Great, great, great.
Yeah.
It's now we're in twenty two, twenty three, we're asking people to pay for me. And I'm sure we have upset people.
We've had a few phone calls.
Okay.
And and the people who've called, are they eligible, that they fill out paperwork?
I don't know, we, I don't know if we asked that question. I'm sure we encourage them, but getting a lot of nods, yes. That happens at the school level.
Are we seeing more forms come in by any chance?
Anyone?
No.
The forms are done online, so we don't always see them.
Oh.
But we are handing out paper forms as well.
Okay.
And we recently sent a PDF home to all families as well. So where does the form come in to? Who's, who's? Online school registration and a care will forward them on.
Okay.
Okay.
That's to my office, so we are processing.
Okay.
Not actually in my office, it's, but they have, they are processing.
So are we seeing an increase right now?
So are we seeing an increase right now?
I said, well, it's an increase because we didn't have to do this for the last few years. So it's. It's hard for me to assess whether or not we had an increase first two years.
So my thought is.
But I can tell you that the, uh, the, the threshold is, is higher, uh, now. So I mean. Personally, you and I were concerned to have both last year. Made very well.
John, we use that.
Um, what I think it is, if we find out that it's an immediate effect. We put this on hold from next month when we have more firm numbers possibly. And maybe then discuss to our food service person. Rather than maybe jump in right now. Might be a better idea. Is what I'm, I'm kinda thinking.
Well, and I'm wondering too, if we can have, is this something that Greg could promote on the media?
I actually just did it in the newsletter last week.
Okay.
And I think, I can't, I come from Newburgh and I know what we were expecting is, is that the increase would come until people were back at school and going, oh, I pay now. So that's why we're trying to get.
Yeah, I, I think I would rather put that on hold from next month to make a decision. We can ponder again.
Yeah, I don't think we need to make a decision other than just get more information.
Yeah.
That'd be, uh, that would be in line with what I was gonna say. I'd like to know. I'm concerned about the financial impact, obviously. But I can't imagine what it would be like to be one of those people back there trying to teach a little person to self-regulate. When they're hungry, you know? Um, but I don't wanna make mountains out of molehills. And I would like to hear at the building level, is this something we should be going to that for? Or is this just a no big deal and we're wasting our time?
What we can.
I'd like to hear from the experts about what they need us to do.
So next month. Lisa, Lisa and, um. Lisa will be on, she's one of you back there. And of course, you have Danny and Pete. They can check in and we'll make sure that Chris is here. So I'll include in the next one.
Can we ask Danny and Pete right now, what you're feeling on this? Is this all I wanna know?
And where, where are we at? Lots of confusion with kids, at least in the junior high level. Um, but I can tell you, Chris is like, no kid will go hungry, so they want them to eat. But the kids aren't sure, do I have to pay or not have to pay? And so I think there's that just connect. On, well, I think my parents put it in the paperwork. And I do know at least in the junior high, when Tamara's been calling on some of our unregistered people, it's the free reduced lunch terms that are hanging. So. Those have gotten most stuff done, just not back.
So, so back to what, what John said, is it a big issue? Is it something that we need to, to really dig into or is it something that we're making? You know?
I think we just need to make sure that we're targeting the families that are definitely gonna qualify. Let's get you qualified. So that it's not an issue at all.
Well, we're supposed to be a political, right? But I think it's an issue. Of all the waste and abuse that Congress spends money on, we're not feeding kids. It is absolutely ridiculous. And I know we used to have a cafeteria full of kids at breakfast because we would shuttle them all in there and say, grab something to eat, even if you already ate. They got to eat a little something. And without exaggerating, we had, there was three in here today, just a couple yesterday. And you can't encourage a kindergartner or first grader to go in and grab a food because we don't know if they ate or not, without looking it up. Whereas a high, and my husband's class is full of kids at lunch that they all eat in this room. And just from, I mean, I don't have current fast data, but a lot of kids have said how stupid it is because we're all the same district. And a lot of them aren't eating because their parents, if they have three kids in the district, that's fifteen bucks a day. Cause it's five something, five-ten for elementary, five fifty for junior high and high school. Well, for bus plus breakfast.
Okay.
So breakfast is two, three fifty lunch, that's five fifty a day. You have three or four kids in the district. The time when inflation is at an all-time high. It is ludicrous and I think our district should go to that for every, for lunch and breakfast for all. And pre-COVID, we had free breakfast here. I don't know what happened.
It changed.
And it's just wrong.
Mr. Thaiderson, I, I respect and appreciate everything you've just said. I wanna kind of put a little bit of pressure on you. Let's assume for sake of debate that we all agree that the ideal situation is every kid gets fed every day, no drama. Eat your food, go to class. The federal government has decided for sake of discussion, the federal government has said, for whatever reason and all the things you said about Congress. For whatever reason, we're not going to fund food in the Cascade District the way we did before. Is it your position, if you're willing to answer, is it your perspective? That, that we should spend whatever it takes, like that should be our highest priority. We should use general fund money that is not. Currently available for that program and it, it should become a high enough priority to be served by the general fund?
Well, if we believe that at the basic level, their needs must be met first before learning can occur, then yes. And we do need to be diligent. It's only been six days. Because my answer in a conversation when I was fired up at my husband about this. Is the kids that need it the most and the parents that probably haven't filled out a form that are probably eligible. So how can we get that into those high schools, junior high, you know, elementary, we need to call directly. But how can we get that to those kids? And get that form filled out because many of them that hang out, you know, in the shop class at lunch probably are eligible. Um, we need to do that part of the diligence, the work and realizing that. I do understand we can't fund everything.
And I'm, I'm trying to get a sense of where it lands, your priority.
It's. Should be a priority, yes.
EK, you haven't come in, I mean, you watched. Yeah, I got a little bit of blowback about half a dozen kids maybe on the first day of school, like, hey, let's go home. Since you know the eventual rules, I did get a couple emails that I just now. High school kids are more resourceful, they'll figure out ways to find food. I mean, they'll, they can borrow whatever they need to. Um, I definitely, if, if action is taken, definitely getting all of our children kids, um. You know, I've heard nothing since the first day of school for kids, either kids, just like when they start, I'm sure. But, um, at the same time, if, if, if the program's there, I'm all in. But at this point in time, I wanna see whether, whether we can work with Greg and give him a publicity campaign to get these forms to like, or at least is right. The kids who aren't eating are the ones probably, probably could, could qualify and something more qualify. Alright, so. We need to get creative about how to do that better, how to get those. And high school is notorious for not filling out the form because they don't wanna be embarrassed or whatever else. As, as all ongoing, any ton of problem.
And we'll push it in our whole process this one, say two, okay?
I was also told, um, yesterday morning when I was, or this morning when I was helping that. Admin, if we know of a family that hasn't filled it out, that could, we can sign off on.
Well, that's my next question. Is there a workaround with people that aren't filling these forms out? And, and what does this form look like? I, I, I'll be honest, I've never seen one, so I wouldn't mind seeing it. And, and. Uh, definitely get our hands on.
You can go online and see.
Okay.
Uh, instead of we pull it, we pull them. It's a federal form, it's a form where we wire, they give it to us.
Okay, but there is a workaround.
Basically, admin can sign off that this family we know it's in use. The tricky part is you don't always know.
Right.
Because we aren't always provided all this, uh, who has or hasn't filled it out. And right now, I know Nicole Dyson is trying to fill, fill through all the forms from the whole district, so. We're talking.
Yeah, we do.
Well, I had a statement, we were talking about the general budget. I wanna kind of give you an idea of how. Uh, the food services fund is a separate fund, uh, and tracking all the revenues and so forth. The first year that was all free, uh, we ended up actually having a positive. Uh, carryover at the end of the year of almost ninety thousand dollars. So that was from twenty twenty-one into twenty-one, twenty-two. Now twenty-one, twenty-two is also a free, it's past year, you just finished that. It's also a free. Uh, lunch, uh, program. And we have a pretty sizable carrier. Uh, it's, it's not, area is not much of an enclosed, but we're looking at about three hundred and sixty thousand dollars. To the good, uh, which is rare. I mean, typically, we, we will spend, we will make a contribution, we budget, you budget, um. Anywhere between a hundred to two hundred thousand dollars contribution from the general fund to. And you have actually done that this year as well. We do that just for safety's sake. Because the cost of food fluctuates so much. And it's all about utilization, uh, in that, in that area when we're talking about funds. So, so this year though, we have three hundred and sixty-two, uh, July, what, first day of school, we have three hundred and sixty. Thousand dollars, yeah, so it's a service design, a carryover, so carryover.
Would you say over the previous four or five years before that, you were spending?
We spent anywhere between one fifty and two hundred thousand dollars. I think that. Worst year since I've been here, we spent two, two, twenty-five.
And that's where the kids came, the whole load from the less, the free reduced.
Exactly. Yeah, that's a, that's a, a traditional program.
So this is a net loser no matter what, as far as if we're just looking at the bottom line.
Yeah, I mean, that, 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 I mean, I wouldn't expect to see three hundred and sixty thousand dollars in carryover. In the next year. You know, no way.
Even if we stayed with the, the trend from nineteen, we're, we're gonna tee up and a good portion of it anyway, just before we go back. We go backwards in the upside of the last years is Chris has come and right evaluated our program. So we saw. Bad turn, we saw that, um. Put the brand new washer.
Right, right, right.
Dishwasher, the commercial dishwasher. So we've been able to do that in a way where. Certainly interested in doing something different, but I appreciate the idea, a slow grow that. One other administrator said they are admin meeting. You know, when we went to the paid way, it's amazing how much waste we did not have. Because kids are paying for food. They are, they're, they're eating it. Right? Last year or the year before, they grab whatever they want. Take one, yeah, yeah, because I'll take it or I don't take it. So the food waste process is coming down and I can ask Chris to kind of talk about that.
Okay.
Right.
But you wanted that information? I think you got your information tonight.
Yes. Okay. Any other comments or anyone?
I have one last.
Sure.
So, back to, we're not making a decision at night. So what does the next month look like then? So just. You understand what I'm trying to say? So we're in this window at the moment, what about kids who don't have food for the next month?
They will get it.
We, we. We will feed them something, it won't be exactly what they want. There's always something, we don't, we don't let kids walk away without doing something.
Like there's apples or.
Yes, there's something.
Usually have a sandwich, apple.
I think it's much better than it was before. It was pretty low salary bar now it's.
Just take something.
Take something, yes. And kids can still charge lunch. So if they get into that line, a lot of our elementary kids, they don't know if their parents paid or not, right? And so they go through that line and they grab their meal. They're not told, you can't have it. They just charged on their account, right?
I see.
And then it goes.
Right, and then we decide what to do with those accounts at the end of the year. You know, try to collect them, yeah, only if they don't, so walk away.
You remember five or six years ago, we talked about that, right? One, one, this district, while lower than most other districts, I was talking about a, a county. Fifteen to twenty thousand dollar deficit, people that had charged for lunch.
And we just walked away from it, I'm not saying.
Yeah, most of it at the high school level, the nice part is, we had said in the past, right?
Right.
Flow it is, but the ceremony itself is now. So that's one way that we catch that. And we've done that for years.
So our kids will still have food this month. In October, we'll have the food service director here and other principals, and other principals. All of you can go ahead and still come.
Would you like me, would you like me to ask you what it would, what would it look like if you just did charter everybody a dollar? Instead of, like Lisa said, a dollar for breakfast, a dollar for lunch.
I think it would be open to any kind of ideas. See, I mean, if, if we can round table ideas, that'd be great.
Right.
I don't see a downside on that.
Or is, is there one meal that's better for the kids to have than the others? You know, I mean, if they. Is breakfast a better starter than lunch in the middle of the day? Kind of maybe more, you wanna ask those questions? Yes, yeah.
I think the one thing is I'm hearing multiple, multiple folks talk about this, that. We should wait until a decision is made. It's, it's like, let's put all of our chips into. This campaign of getting people to fill out the forms and then see where we're at. I agree, because I think. Because of unfairness, right? If we get enough people to sign all these forms, perhaps we can turn this tide and everything falls below that line.
Right.
And so we're, we're, we might be a little ahead of ourselves if we're still eligible to, to meet the criteria.
Right.
And frankly, this all goes away then. And so, so it might come back to Greg, happened to. Continue with that, that campaign to see if we can get interest and then maybe look at the, the workaround options and, and just.
And all the thousands and whatever.
Okay, does that sound good?
Sounds great.
Okay, sounds good. Okay, moving on, Senate committee appointments.
So, uh, we have an open budget committee appointment because the person that was on the budget committee is sitting there, so. Um, in the last couple of times, you have appointed people. One of your folks that, that we interviewed in his job said was interested in budget committee, Chief Taylor. Said he was interested, I don't know if that's somewhere you wanna go or if you'd like to figure out if we can do that. Uh, in the past, you guys have just appointed. So.
Is that something we can discuss right here, right now?
We can.
I'd say like, my, my personal opinion, if Chief Taylor was interested, I would be a hundred percent on board with that option.
Yeah, let's.
Anybody opposed? Yeah, if he, if he's willing to accept that challenge, absolutely.
Uh, we can talk about that. I'm sure you can, we want, alright.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, so we'll have that taken care of. Six, that budget.
So, the board goal sheet, you guys, if you've seen that, I've got that out to you to take a look at it. Was the conversation that we had, what do we stand for in the metal versus curriculum, academic professional development, maintenance, legislative needs, moving opportunities. Still with a number of circles that you guys filled a number of years ago. Uh, I've reached out to each and every one of you who all seems, um, interested in this content and this idea along with. In October, asking, uh, the administrators, administration to come back with their goals. So you can take a look at those as well. So we talked about that today. The plan would be is to build a work session in October before the regular board meeting. Hour. The set time is probably about ten to fifteen minutes ops and we will hit, uh, the various groups. Uh, to provide you goals that they're looking for for this year. That's okay. That's kind of what we did six or seven years ago, unless you guys would like to see something.
That's important, we get to know spoken, but that's still what's important for them.
Would you prefer, um, seven or eight of them with five or six minutes or would you prefer like, you know, secondary, elementary? Special education, curriculum and instruction. Would you like to kind of the big circles first and then if you wanna move on to the smaller circles, we can do that in November? Or would you prefer just October with, with all of them, which would only give you about five or six minutes to each one, or we could make that a two-hour meeting instead of a one-hour meeting? It's up to you guys. In the past, I can say. In the past, did it in one meeting because we did a major groups first, the ones that are in buildings, doing that one first. In the second year, we added the others, but then we realized we needed more time. So that they could explain along with, um, your guys' asking questions.
I think there's value if we get everybody at the table.
Okay.
And so, I mean, I, I would be on board with that just for. Efficiency, getting everybody here at one time and having that big discussion.
Okay, I will move with, uh, board chair, if that's okay with you, to put together the six or seven. Uh, groups and then we'll probably try to start it at five thirty, five fifteen for October. And then that way you guys can digest the information in the world from there to the seventh. That's what we've done traditionally.
As I expressed, you and Karen in your office, I have no experience writing school board goals at all. But I don't wanna be one more thing for a bunch of building administrators who already have a very cold plate. Um, so I'm interested in back to the basics, keep it simple, what we need to be focused on so that they can focus on what they wanna focus on. And that's gonna be my attitude all the way through.
So many of them just heard you tonight, so that's a good way, place for them to start in their process.
Please don't turn that into something bigger than it needs to be. That is just me talking for myself.
I think you're probably talking group, but that's okay.
Okay.
Any other comments? Moving on, seven public comment. There's instant public comments. Oh, any comments? Moving on, seven public comment. There's instant public comments. Though we will move on to revolutions. Which there is one of. It is eight hundred one reason should run the higher recommendations.
You love Cascade Board of Education groups to approve the new higher recommendations of Emily Collins, elementary teacher, Turner, Kelly, Donkey, Cobra Nate, science teacher, junior high, Carol Kleiner, English teacher, high school, Brittany, Griffith, Ted, behavior teacher, Onslow, Bruce Kennedy, construction teacher, high school, David Chewy, spent resource teacher, junior high and Cindy. Thank you. Elementary teacher, Onslow, as recommended by the administration.
Second. So moved in second into approves the higher, new higher recommendations always in case.
Aye, aye.
Oppose, same side? Question carries. Future agenda items.
So on the future agenda items, we talked about, you guys talked about it in the work or reflection concept of the institute board meetings. Um, and we've already talked about the state conference that was on there. My suggestion would be often regarding the reflection concept, but once you hear all of the goals, see how it is. I don't know if they quite necessarily match, but it might be something to think about in terms of improving your process along with asking the administration to improve their process. So I'm thinking of it kind of globally as a way to improve all processes that just we worked to try to make a kind of through the student. That's my point. You guys knew as you please.
Okay. So we have your set board goals, which we had had a meeting beforehand, safety report for the fall, MFA presentation and OSBA road show, which I got posted.
It's coming and I will get that information up to you.
And we're also going to put on there.
You said you had that.
MFA and then OSBA. That's what's already on.
What was right on?
The safety report in the fall, so that'll be missed during.
So I will ask uh, Mr. Dyer to not only give this school and board with safety, but next month, just until he's here.
Right. Okay. Was there anything else? Okay. I think that's all right. So we will set as many adjournments. It's all right. For everyone, I appreciate it. Sorry, your.